Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity that we can get together as citizens, discuss our way into the future, keeping them mindful of the past and the needs of the others. Thank you for this beautiful place we call home here in Hickory. Continue to bless us and be with us as we move forward. In Jesus' name we pray.
Good evening and welcome to the March 5th meeting of Hickory City Council. I'm Mayor Protem Hank Guest, Mayor of Rice who is not here this evening. He is in Raleigh. I know maybe some of you out of Raleigh on the news a while ago, if you're watching the news, he was in Raleigh at the Mayor's Coalition meeting of our Governor. And I'd say I saw the news a while ago and I can verify it. I'm gonna say thank you for attending tonight and we'll get started in a minute. We're gonna start off tonight with our special presentations. Mr. Berry, I'm going to keep the public schools art well crafted at Mandy.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Guest and Mr. Berry and Mr. Crone, City Council. A few months ago, we talked about this exciting partnership with Hickory Public Schools, with Dr. Hart and with his leadership and direction, working with the school board represented to them as well, to join with our artistic and creative side of life well crafted, work with our students in Hickory Public Schools, and challenge them to be inspiring artists. And so tonight, in front of you all, the first place winners of this art well crafted contest. So I'd like to go ahead and call up Sandy, Father of Ham, and all the students are gonna come up and she'll call on them.
Thank you so much. It is our honor to be here tonight. And I'd like, first of all, to introduce Jennifer Dufour, who has been our statewide chairperson for the art contest, and she's done a lot of work. I also want to recognize Dr. Walter Hart, our superintendent. And as I call your name, if you will please come forward, we'd like you to bring your artwork so everyone can see it. And remain standing up here until everyone's been introduced. In photography, our primary first place winner is Cadence Hardy from Southwest Elementary.
We're also presenting each of them with a key to the scene. Now, do we get the key, Dave? We have to give it back to you.
I think that's a give back.
You stay up here.
In photography, our intermediate division, first place is Cecilia Schout from Oakwood Elementary. The senior division, first place is Zoe Renee May. And I'm not sure that she's here, but we would like to show you her artwork. She is a student at H-CAM or Hickory Career and Arts Magnet School. And by the way, our theme was helping others. In literature, primary division, first place, Peter Zagarollin from Oakwood Elementary.
Hold it up. Show it. Oh, that's okay. Okay, well, read it. Okay, we'll let him read it.
The world is messy. People throw their trash on the ground, plastic bottles, metal cans, candy wrappers, coffee cups, trash cans close by. People turn their heads and keep walking. People get sad. The earth gets sad. I will get my gloves on, my boots on, my trash bag and go pick up all that trash and make others feel happy.
Whoa, that's a good job.
Intermediate division, first place Sage Marie Dur from Viewmont Elementary.
Firefly. There were blazing red and yellow and orange flames everywhere. The flames seemed to dance around the house, but there was no music playing. As the flames moved, they looked like a group of ballet dancers kicking in the air. All you could see was smoke and people yelling and crying out. As the wooden house slowly burned to the ground, it was a scary time for Tyler. It was the saddest day of his life. Tyler was an eight-year-old boy who lived in my cousin's neighborhood. He was tall and had curly white hair. He was nice and always told lots of jokes. Everyone liked him because he always treated people nice. He would let you ride his bike and he would play his Nintendo DS games. Tyler and I became good friends. He was always, he always played together and talked about new video games. He was a really good friend. Then he changed. It was right after the fire. He stopped smiling and having fun. It was sad. The fire was the saddest day of Tyler's life. He stood in front of his yard with tears in his eyes, watching his family's things burn with smoke. As he looked around, all he had left was his family. All of his family made it out of the fire safely, but Tyler was still very sad. None of his toys, toys, baseball courts, or games were safe. Everything he had was gone. Wow. I was so sad when I heard the news about Tyler's house. I could not believe it. I had just played Wii games with him the week before the fire. It was like a bad dream made, but I knew it was real. I cannot imagine losing my home and all of my things. I felt so bad for Tyler and I wanted to help him, but what can I do? I was just an eight-year-old. So I decided to ask my mom for help. I knew she would help. Together, my mom and I decided, Tyler and his family, by collecting toothbrushes, toothpaste, socks, and clothes. I was not sure if this would be enough to help, but my mom said that every little bit of help will make a big difference. After collecting toothpaste and toothbrushes, socks, and clothes, my mom gave, my, my mom and I gave them to Tyler and his family. They were so happy and cried as they thanked us. I was happy too, and I cried a little myself. My small effort has made a big difference, like my mom told me. I had helped a friend and his family. By helping Tyler's family, I learned a lot about helping others. I think it is important to always try to be kind and give people a helping hand. I know that a little helping hand can really, can really make a big difference. The next time someone needs help, please try your best to be a friend and give them the helping hand. If I can do it, you can too.
What an inspiration that was.
Our middle school, first place winner is Mallory Dufour, Grandview Middle School. Maybe your day is sad and blue, or maybe it's a day you don't feel so good. Whatever you do and whatever you say, helping others won't lead you astray. Even when you just hold the door or pull them up from the floor, whatever you do and whatever you say, make sure that it makes a day. Be kind, caring, and generous too. Your personality reflects on what you do. Whatever you do and whatever you say, you might just help save the day. So remember this in whatever way, helping others won't lead you astray.
Visual Arts Division, Primary, first place, Zane Krenzal.
Turn around so they can see behind you. Man, what a good job.
Intermediate Division, first place, Rachel Register, Oakwood Elementary. In Senior High, the first place winner is Suzie Wold from Hickory High School. And I'm not sure if she's...
Well, I'll let you show it. That's a good job. Thank you very much. Let's give them all another round of applause. You need some of those smaller ones up front?
Nope.
Yes?
Ready, look here. Great, thank you.
Thank you again. I know that we probably have a lot of proud parents and grandparents out there as well. I want to say a special thank you to principals and Dr. Hart and all the teachers that without them, none of us would have been possible. Thank you. Once again, we've got some of our youth from our city here, and it's an honor and it's a privilege to be able to stand up here and talk about our youth and our city. And once again, without the help and support of parents and teachers and principals and superintendents, and everyone helps you along the way, I was gonna say, congratulations to you, and I want to read this proclamation, okay? It says, "Whereas Claire Elise McCray is the daughter of Pete, Peter McCray and Ellen McCray, she is 12 years old and a seventh grader at Northview Middle School, Hickory Public Schools. And whereas Claire is a straight A student, plays violin in the orchestra, is the vice president of the student council, a member of the junior beta club, a member of the international club, and writes for the school newspaper. And whereas Claire won the spelling bee at Northview Middle School on December 10th, 2012. And whereas Claire won the Hickory Public Schools District Spelling Bee on January 10th, 2013. And whereas Claire won the 2013 Charlotte Observer Regional Spelling Bee on February 11th, 2013. And whereas Claire has now qualified for the Scripps National Spelling Bee and Bee Week 2013 in Washington DC to be held May 26th through June 1st, 2013. And whereas Claire's principal, Stephanie Duchové, at both Jenkins and Northview, and all of her teachers at Jenkins Elementary and Northview Middle School have contributed to her success. And whereas Claire brought great honor to herself in Hickory by the gracious and humble way she described her reaction to the win in Charlotte as reported in the Observer. Now therefore, I Rudy Wright, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim, May 26th, 2013, as Claire Elise McCray Day, proclaim this fifth day I can't say enough, it's always an honor when we get to congratulate and honor and recognize our youth. I really do appreciate it, all students, to be able to do that. Okay, next under special presentations will be the presentations of fiscal year 2013-2014 Board and Community's Work Plan. And I'm just gonna go in order after they're here. First up is the Library Advisory Board. I'll call upon Patty, Patty.
Mr. Mayor Protem, City Council members, Mr. Berry and Mr. Crone. As Chair of the Library Advisory Board, I submit to the Board's work plan for 2013-14. Fulfilling these objectives will help us be more informed about library operations, help us promote the library and our community, and help us enhance programming efforts. None of the items on our plan requires financial input. Each Board member will participate in a minimum of four specific volunteer activities related to library programming or operations. The Board will contribute at least one article about the library to the Hickory Daily Record, contribute an article to Friends at the Library newsletter, speak to the neighborhood college class during its library visit, and make at least one appearance on the H-K-Y's first talk program to promote the library. Number three, the Board will advocate for public library issues with state legislators, the state library, and local funders. Number four, the Board will form a subcommittee to develop programs and other auxiliary activities in conjunction with the appearance of author Sherman Alexei at the library in March 2014. Number five, the Board will receive updates from staff on relevant library technology issues at least once annually. Number six, the Board places a calendar year-end effort to solicit donations to the library's endowment. Number seven, the Board will assist with host city event at the Salt Block for the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Conference in October 2013. And number eight, the Board will invite State Library of North Carolina Public Library trustee liaison to conduct training on appropriate duties and legal responsibilities of library advisory boards.
Do you have any questions? Thank you. Next up is Mike Hollis with the Citizens Advisory Board.
Good evening, everyone. Like my predecessor presenter, I'm not here to request any funds on behalf of the committee, but on behalf of the Citizen Advisory Committee, I am here to present our work plan objectives for the coming year. They are to continue representing our citizens, all of which, planning, assessing, reviewing, and developing a grant program for our town, and usually the funds available to the city through the community development department. Number two, continue recommending loan applications to City Council for various housing-related programs offered to the low and moderate income families within the City of Hickory, including the renovation of existing homes through the city's housing rehabilitation program. Three, continue to create a housing subdivision in Kenworth and the Ridgeview area. Number four, to provide funding for income-eligible housing-related development and negative plans for Green Park, Kenworth, Ridgeview, and West Hickory. Fifth, to pursue Hickory Horizon's goal of original strategy for affordable homeownership. And lastly, continue to investigate a variety of options for rehabilitating Ridgeview to Third Street Court Southwest and Eighth Street Drive Southwest, a single-family house. And on behalf of the committee, that is all we're planning for the coming year.
Questions? Thanks. Next up is Leroy Harris with the Community Appearance Commission.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Council members, Mr. Crone, Mr. Berry. I'm Leroy Harris, Chairman of the Community Appearance Commission, and I'm here to present our work plan for fiscal year 2013-14. As you can see on the slide before you, we have a number of the objectives that we strive to do throughout the year. We have the Community Appearance Grants, which in the budget, we have $35,000 requested, and this is an increase from $5,000 from the previous year. And this could provide money up to seven grants. We have the landscape grant for $10,000, which can provide up to four grants. We have the litter contracts for $10,000, which provides for the roadways and litter pickup. Arbor Day, $700, provides the annual tree giveaway that we do during Arbor Day. Litter education, $500, provides public education resources. Bupification awards that we present annually, usually in October, here before City Council, and that's to provide recognition to the citizens or businesses in Hickory that beautify the city. The total budget request is $56,300. Again, that's an increase of $9,000. I think we have a couple slides just to show you what we've done this past year. Two great examples of people that we've given the grants to. The first one, which probably everyone's really familiar with, is the Holler Hosey Mill Project. And that's a before and after project. That particular project in itself is estimated in excess of $1 million. And the windows alone were $35,000. And we paid $10,000 to that effort there. The other example on the right, that is the Hickory Health Lodge over here on Fourth Street, along the railroad, and that's the before and after. They've taken a lot of pride in their building and the surroundings, and we were able to give them a $5,000 Community Appearance Grant. And that budget there in itself was in excess of $12,000. So as you can see, we do put the money to a lot of good efforts to beautify the city. It's a very worthy project that, the objectives that we do, I think is well received.
Next is David Walker and Ray Sird, the Community Relations Council.
Good evening. Glad to be here, City Council members. Nick, and in absence, Rudy. We're going to go through this in a minute, but our objectives basically will be the very same as last year, and our budget will be very much the same. The reason my co-chair, Ray, and I decided to do that is having a co-chair was probably unusual, but we believe strongly in diversity, not only on the committee, but in the leadership of our committees. So we decided we were going to sit and listen for a while and make sure we understood the rules and objectives of people that have been there longer than we have. And took that under advisement and decided to make no change going forward for 2013 and 2014, keeping the budget at $12,000. And with four major objectives, maintaining the CRC Grant Program for Solutions of Human Relations Challenges in the Community, and have a spring and reform grant request session. In addition to that, basically hold two events, sponsor a multicultural oriented event, explore an event since the concert, and then going forward for a $17,000 overall budget with the grant being $12,000 and that partnered with the city boards. Having said that, I'd like to then present to you, give a heads up to the council, that looking forward to 2014 and 15, we'd like to make some changes. And I'd like to introduce again Ray Sird, my co-chair.
If you can flip the next screen. Like most organizations, when we take over, where most of the organizations I've been involved with, the plan is to always try to leave it better than we found it. And so with that said, we have, we think that Community Relations Council is an outstanding organization, but we would like to, we think we can add to it to make it even better. One of the things we're gonna do, hopefully, next slide please, is to, we've, since I've been on council since 2011, we've always had vacancies, roughly three. And so we gotta figure out a way to recruit and advertise council members. We're gonna, right now, the council consists of 16 members, two of which are high school students. We're gonna hope to include the college, a college student, one from CBCC and one from LR, to go along with our two high school students, because we believe, like we saw today, the youth is a, is really important part of our community. And the assets and resources they have at these colleges can all make our Community Relations Council stronger. The third one, the new editor, this is relatively new, a couple of years at most, he's got a good series of Good Neighbor Series program going on within Hickory Daily Record. And I sat with Mr. Miller, and we're gonna collaborate on that good series of Good Neighbor Series and our annual individual recognition for human relationships and partner with HDR, Good Neighbors, and selects, hopefully selects someone, one person from that Good Neighbor Series that you've, you know, been reading throughout the year. Also, we're gonna partner with Hickory Daily Record on a potential Neighborhood Day or Awards Day starting next year, where we'll have an event simultaneously, a Saturday event simultaneously going on on one particular Saturday. And each ward will have an event during the afternoon for a two-hour timeframe, all simultaneously. So we're working that, and we'll have more details on that next year. Dave, you'll take the next one?
I'd like to jump to the fifth bullet. When Ray and I started this process, we went back for 10 years and created a data book, which showed all the grants, who we gave them to, the sectors they were in, the amount of the grants, and the recurring nature of the grants, so we'd have a better idea when someone showed up that was new, that we could give them a chance for being more observant than getting into a rhythm of the same people giving the same grants. With that in mind, we redefine the grant process to make sure that we receive proof from these folks that they use the grant for the purposes of which we granted it. And second of all, we'd like to see expansion of their programs. All right? With that in mind, Ray, you know, recover the logo.
Yeah, I met with Mandy, and we have a logo and works to change, to get on board. Yeah, I met with Mandy, and we have a logo and works to change, to get on board with the new brand, and we're going to update our webpage to include Facebook and Twitter links, so that, again, to facilitate membership and facilitate our ability to connect with our communities in all levels of communication.
I think we'll just be saying that, okay? I'll speak more about realignment of the budget, and I know we're running out of time, we will cover it quickly. But I think we want to tend toward having more impact from larger grants to fewer organizations, and create some competition for that sort of thing. So with that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and create the next page. The next slide, please, and we'll go back to this. Over the last five years, we've had a budget of seventeen thousand with no changes, expenditures of above fourteen. Seventy-seven percent of the budget is basically spent, with unspent being about four thousand dollars. It's our understanding that if you're willing to give us the money, then we should have an impact to the community, and rather have it be, quote, "a savings" rolled over the next year. So with that in mind, that's what we intend to do, and give you a heads up, that that's what we'll be asking for going forward.
In the last screen, basically just to recap the objectives, we believe that the biggest one, obviously, part of the Community Relations Council is the grants. That's where the majority of the funds go to. Out of the seventeen thousand, twelve thousand goes to the CRC, so towards the grants. Again, we'll come back next year and propose an increase of a thousand dollars over the five years of flat budgets. We're going to propose two thousand grant budget total available for distribution, increase that to fifteen thousand.
No, with that said, I think we have the last slide, it's the one we really believe in, so unless there are any questions.
It sounded like you guys were trying to go.
Yes, sir, we're hoping to. So you'll see a big change in the work plan next year, shuffle a little bit of money around, but it's the same amount, just put it a little different.
I have copies of this, I'll leave them here. Our goal and objective, with this heads up, we expect you to give us the money.
I would really like to have you improve the other two. Anybody have any questions? Next up is Candy Masara from Hickory International Council.
Good evening, Mayor of Port town, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crohn. Good evening, everybody. Well, I'm going to go through the slides first for the work plan for this coming year, with the notion that the budget will be unchanged from this past year at eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Please, just go back just quickly. I just would like to make note, like I do every year, is that the bottom flags represent the council members. We are of about nine different countries, and we have represented the council for the last ten years, most of us. Thank you. So, next slide. So these are the work, this is the work plan for the following year. It's basically unchanged from this year except for one change, which I will get to as we go through the individual slides. The next event coming up March eleventh, a year from now, is the Pasia Model UN with the Norrion University. The Boy Scouts of America is the organizer, and the HIC is the sole sponsor of this event. So we give the majority, we give half of the budget to the, to the Norrion actually, and to the Boy Scouts to have this event at the Norrion, and it houses about five to six or seven different high schools from around the city and around the county. The change from last year, in the past, we've had the International Spring Fest, last year we had Unity Fair, and this year we have changed drastically, because we wanted change after ten years, as you know, we celebrated our tenth anniversary last year. And this year, in conjunction with the Footcandle Society and Alan Jackson, we are going to have the first annual international film festival for children. So this is something we think that will be good to the community. We don't have that one here. There are some festivals around the North Carolina, specifically closest would be Asheville. It'll be one day with about six different movies. The first, the morning will be set aside for kindergarten through fourth grades, fourth graders, and the afternoon, fifth graders through high school. It'll have international activities in between the movies and some international and educational activities throughout the day. And that's all we had at the South Park Auditorium from ten a.m. to four p.m. So remember, May eleventh, everybody, please attend free to the public as usual with this event. The next event, which is tied to the International Spring Fest, is the Fortmoot. Fortmoot is, this is the thirtieth anniversary, which is the official festival, official international festival for North Carolina. It started in Rainsville, around Asheville, and this will be the third year that we house it here in Hickory. It'll be on July eleventh at the South Park Auditorium at seven p.m. And this year, they're inviting the last, the best ten groups that they could gather from around the world, because the part of the Fortmoot is to bring, to fly in those groups from outside the country. You cannot have anybody from the U.S., but you can have from Hawaii, Canada, but not from the U.S., and everybody else is from a different country. These are the ones that were invited this year, plus three more to be announced later. Again, again, with the help of the city council and with the help of our well-organized budget, we may be able to offer it for free to the public, but in general, it'll be a small fee if not. Thank you. Next one. We started doing the grants, community grants, four years ago, and we broke it down into either two five hundred dollar grants or one one thousand dollar grant, and we continue to do that. The previous grants, as you will see, were given to, can you go, please, were given to Hickory High School for the Foreign Language Studies, two thousand nine, and you can move forward, Tom from Home, no, I'm sorry, Tom from Home, the Global Film Initiative for the library, and the last year, it just happened, the multicultural celebration at Southwest Elementary, just took place in January of this year. The next event is the Community Connections, and again, it's with Footcandle Society, Catawba County. We bring in maybe three or four international movies with subtitles. We had last year the artist which won the Academy Award for the best movie, best foreign movie, and we're bringing next Thursday, next Thursday at seven o'clock, Amur, which won last Sunday, Sunday before last, the best foreign movie for this year. So please go to the Carolina Theater. Ellen, will be both up and down, or just?
Yes, both theaters.
Both theaters, up and down, seven o'clock, next Thursday, March fourteenth. Next. The last item is the Great Decisions, which is something we do, started about two years ago, this is the third year. It's a community discussion about the most, most thought-provoking foreign policy challenges that are happening this year, and these are the topics for this year. We bring about twenty people, we meet at the library, and we discuss these topics, or at least some of them amongst ourselves, and we discuss them. So this is something we think would be in the best interest of the mission of the council is to continue these discussions. That's all I have. Again, as I said, these are, these will be taking place, and I would appreciate if the council, the city council would grant us with the same budget as last year. I also want to thank Ms. Masara for being our meditator, and I would very much appreciate if the city would reconsider allowing us to have a liaison. We are the only board and commission without a liaison. We have been without one for about fifteen, sixteen months, and I think it would be best through it if we have one. Thank you.
Any questions to Candy? Thank you. All right, next up is Brian Fraser with Hickory Regional Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor of Port town, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crohn. I'm here to represent the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, and the planning commission is not requesting any funding again in the coming year, but does have a six-point program. We're looking at conducting, continuing to conduct annual reviews of Hickory by choice and land development code, as well recommend amendments to improve both documents on an annual basis. Continuing to expeditiously review petitions pertaining to rezoning, special use permit variances, administrative appeal, and other related items. Monitor the city's EPA brownfield assessment grants and providing assistance needed in programs implementation to professional staff. Stay current on current, stay current on planning-related issues by means of training provided by city staff or the qualified organizations, and provide direction to city staff regarding upcoming long-range plan projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Next up is Hayden Frye with the Hickory Youth Council.
Good evening. My name is Hayden Frye, and I am chair of the Hickory City Youth Council. The youth council has accomplished a tremendous amount in twelve and a half years, and we plan to continue to tackle larger obstacles every year. We enjoy serving the community through service projects, aiding fellow youth through our own initiatives, and all the while learning more about the city government. Funding for youth council allows us to enrich the larger community around us, the youth within the city, and ourselves. The youth council is constantly involved in ways to better the community. This year, the youth council cleaned and painted Hickory City Skate Park out of the recreation center. The skate park was originally promoted by the youth council, and we know that as such, we should play a part in its upkeep. Members of youth council volunteer time for the Cops for Cops program, and we are planning on volunteering at the Hickory City Annual Easter event. However, the youth council doesn't just volunteer, other city events, we engineer our own. This year, the Hickory City Youth Council is conceiving, planning, and implementing its own events. We have partnered with the Hickory Music Factory and will put on dialogue circles, using drum circles, to discuss how music breaks down linguistic barriers. This year, we have planned our own anti-bullying concert and video contests to help raise awareness for teen bullying. Our anti-bullying concert is taking place on April twenty-sixth, and videos from the video contest will be shown at the concert. In addition to these events, we have also put in the works a plan for Hickory City Teen Art Wall. This art wall will be located at the Patrick Beaver Memorial Library, and will be implemented when the library renovates to include a new teen area. We are very excited to partner with the library in this endeavor. We tour city facilities every year so that we can learn more about how our city operates. This year, we have toured the library and plan to tour our fire station and police station. We respectfully request three thousand six hundred dollars for our 2012-2013 budget. We believe that this money will allow us to continue to grow as a body and implement more programs in our community. Some of our goals in the upcoming year include touring city facilities to learn more about city operation, participating in programs to increase knowledge and effectiveness of youth council, continuing to promote the use of Hickory Parks and Recreation youth-related programs, providing teen building and leadership training, holding events that will involve the fellow youth of the city, partnering with other boards, commissions, and organizations that promote diversity as well as citizen and civic education, and serving as role models for Hickory City's youth. We continue to be one of the best youth councils in the state, and we are proud of that. It's been an extreme pleasure and honor to serve as chair of Hickory City Youth Council during our senior year. Even though I've only served on youth council for two years, I have seen the progress the youth council has made in conceiving and implementing its own programs in the community. Our youth council is strong, and I know that I speak for all of us, and I thank you for this unique opportunity. Whether it is volunteering, giving you insight on issues that pertain to youth, or implementing our own programs, the Hickory City Youth Council is here to serve you. Thank you for creating the youth council and maintaining it these twelve and a half years. I know that it has had immense impact on my life, as well as the lives of the other twenty-four students on the fire unit. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your continued support of the youth council.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right, next up is Zach Taylor with the Hickory Preservation Commission.
Good evening, Mayor of Port town, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crohn. I am Zach Taylor, and it's a pleasure to speak to you on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission and our work plans for the 2013-2014 year. 2012 was an interesting year for our committee. It was a, I guess tedious is the best word to use, is we worked through our major accomplishment, which is updating the design review, the design review guidelines that our commission uses for our properties. That was overdue and a big project for our year. Our 2013-2014 budget is the same as it was last year, which is fifteen thousand one hundred dollars, and our commission work plan consists of five major objectives. The first one would be that the commission would administer the Historic Preservation Program, when basically, we review the applications for the certificates of appropriateness, we review nominations to the National Register of Historic Places, we make recommendations on new historic districts or landmarks, and we attend training conferences for all commission members. And obviously, the objective here is just to ensure that locally designated historic districts and landmarks are protected from unmanaged change. Our second objective is to administer the Historic Preservation Incentive Grant Program, and obviously, this is a grant program that helps historic property owners call, defray the cost of listing the property as they apply for rehabilitation tax credits. Our third objective is to implement a phased historic plaque program for historic properties in our community. Again, this requires that the city pay half of the cost of the bronze plaques to help designate the historic properties. And doing this in a uniform way will certainly allow us to be consistent and assist the commission's outreach and educational efforts. So our fourth objective would be to research the feasibility of updating the city's survey of historic properties. Again, there's no real financial impact for this in 2013 or 2014, but we would start investigating and applying to receive a grant to help us do this. We have not done a survey since 1999 of our historic area, and this will give the city a good idea of new locations for additional registries for local historic districts to be expanded. And my last objective, or the fifth one for the committee, or commission, is to continue the outreach and educational efforts to build support for historic preservation. And again, that's trying to increase and update the information that we have available on the city's website, updating and creating informational brochures for developers and property owners, and providing access to training and awareness programs for local professionals and property owners. And again, it's just the last one, it's really important that we ensure that all property owners, professionals, contractors, and developers understand the rights, responsibilities, and benefits related to historic preservation. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Next up is Tony Wood with the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Good evening, Mayor of Port town, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crohn. I want to start by, on behalf of the commission and Parks and Recreation staff, thanking you for your continued support of Parks and Rec. We're passionate about what we do. We believe it adds a significant amount to the quality of life of our residents, and we appreciate your continued support. Running Parks and Rec is a massive undertaking on a daily basis, and the staff deserves a lot of credit for what they do, day in and day out. Our work plan has seven objectives that lie outside of that, and that's what I want to go through today. First objective is to strongly emphasize the Parks and Recreation Department's plans and efforts to renovate and upgrade existing recreation facilities and buildings, and to collaborate with community partners to assist in funding opportunities for these improvements. We had this on our plan for last year, and we've made progress. One of the items on last year's objectives was the reconstruction of the Hickory City Park Upper Tennis Course. That project is complete, and that's a picture of the finished product there. Also, reconstruction of the lower tennis courts. That is in process now. The Neil Clark new HBA system in the gymnasium is complete. Saw that a couple of weeks ago, it's very nice. And the gym floor replacement at Neil Clark is also in progress now. This is in the current capital improvement project mode, I guess, to get new seating for the LP Friends Stadium, and we're doing that in collaboration with Hickory Baseball League. One more item, another item on, the first objective is the new field lights, also in collaboration with Hickory Baseball. Replacement of the gym floor at Ridgeview is also in that first objective. And then to undertake improvements at Rotary, Guyner Park, the building that we have out there, it's in need of some repairs. And at Henry Ford, there are currently six, there are currently six fields. Field one is the only one that has lighting, and you see a picture of it there. Due to the expansion, this, the continued growth of soccer programs, we are asking for additional field lighting at fields two, four, five, and six. And we're working in collaboration with the Tava Valley Youth Soccer Association on Second objective, this was on last year's plan as well as to support the development of the future Clonger Mill Park as recommended by the approved park master site plan. Third objective is to pursue the development of a dog park within Hickory's park system. We have identified Fairbrook Optimus Park as a location for this. I'm sure you're familiar with the Community Gardens Program, where we've repurposed a facility that is underutilized, and it's been an amazing success, the Community Gardens Program. This follows in those footsteps in that, you know, the demands that are being put on Parks and Rec, the needs of the community are changing, and we're repurposing Fairbrook Optimus for a dog park. And it's not just me that is saying that. The pets like that, too, right? There would be two parts of that park. An area for large dogs, and then a small dog area as well. We believe this is a very good use of an underutilized facility. Next objective is to continue to enhance the city of Hickory in its efforts to develop greenways and trails in accordance with the 2005 Greenways and Trails Master Plan. Work with staff to prioritize the recommendations contained within the master plan and develop an implementation strategy. Next objective is to support the development of an outdoor amphitheater at Henry Ford. That is a photo of the structure that we've identified that we'd like to put there. And then to support the completion of the Sammy Pines Master Site Plan as recommended in the 1997 Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the 2010 Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment endorsed by Hickory by Choice. And there is a photo of that site. Lastly, to continue exploring the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation to pursue an aquatic recreation facility that would serve the entire Hickory community by research and funding mechanisms, locations, and infrastructure. And we understand that all these work plan items are subject to budget approval, availability of funds, those types of things. I think you have detailed documents, or documents that detail costs, those types of things. Everything has been updated with what current costs. Any questions?
I can comment on a question.
Yes, sir.
I do very much appreciate your effort on the tennis courts. Thank you very much for your efforts as well. They're very, very well done, and I'm glad that at some point in the past that you realized that they have to be resurfaced from the ground up. And I'm actually playing there more often than I've ever done so. And the last few times I've been there, I could not find a place to play. So please, go ahead and do the bottom course so we can get down. And also, I would have a sincere request that we need some water there, and we need restrooms. We need to have, so many people going there, we need to have some restrooms and some water to drink, because we don't have any right now.
We'll have time for the public comment here.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks. All right, anybody else have any questions for Tony?
Thank you so much for your time and your support.
All right, next up is David Zach Rowley with Public Art.
I'm sorry, pardon me. Thank you. Z is F W for. Mr. Protam, Mayor Protam, the council, Mr. Crone, Mr. Berry. First thing I'd like to do is thank Public Services for all of their work that they have done moving our benches and other sculptures around the city. See, we have made those benches so heavy that it takes 12 men and a boy and 14 trucks to move those things around. We did that so nobody would steal them. I don't think we've lost one, have we, Brian? Not one.
I'm the police department.
That's right, that's right. But I would like to thank Public Services for all of their help in locating those benches and moving them from place to place. Okay, you can go to the next one. This is the sculpture that was out at the airport. And seeing we have a lot of people and airplanes out there, we have moved it from the airport to the Patrick Beaver Library, and they're very excited to have that at the library at this point. So it's being put to good use at this point. One of the things in our budget program is the maintenance and maintaining these benches that we have throughout the city. We have just finished restoring this Maryland bench, and this is one of my favorite benches. And unfortunately, it got a lot of damage, and we have just finished restoring that. And that is an ongoing thing. That's unfortunate thing that we have to do is to keep the maintenance up on these benches. But we think it's worth it. This is one of the newer benches that we have relocated to Farmer's Market in the western end of Union Square. We have put nine new benches throughout the city. Here are two of them. And we have plans for 11 more benches. And we would personally like to thank Rick Rains for donating these benches. He has just done a wonderful job in giving us these benches. We have, obviously, in our budget, we have a program to get these benches redone, or get them done by a local artist. This is our recent purchase for the art walk, and it's called Convergence. We have, as you know, been working on this artwork, art walk for maybe 10, 15 years, right? But we're getting closer. We have obviously run out of funds, and so... But this was budgeted for last year, and we have just purchased that. We're working with another local artist for another sculpture. We hope to have over 10 or 15 of these things on the art walk between downtown and the art center. The city has helped us on some of the crosswalks. So it's working. It just takes time. And we probably are going to need some private funding also, but we're working on that at this point. We're going to continue public art programs, sculpture project, initiate Phase Three of the Art on the Bench Program. As I mentioned, 11 benches. Provide outreach and educational efforts to build support for public art. Some of the commission's initiatives include art walk brochure. We finally are going to have a brochure. And then public art website. Number three, provide for continuous maintenance of existing artwork. And that is it. And we're asking for a budget for $17,400, I think. Is it 17,400, correct? 17, no, excuse me, 17,500. And we expect no surplus. We would like to use all of it for the future sculptures that we'd like to buy for the art walk and other things, programs to beautify Hickory. And we would very much like to approve that budget toward you. Thank you.
I've just got one on the maintenance of the benches. Is that mostly due to vandalism or just weather?
Skateboarders. We still have that, mostly.
I know you had the arms that you tried to pull in there.
Because originally, we had them armless, and then we thought, all right, this will stop the skateboarders. Well, it hasn't.
Arm fish is not a turd.
Next up is Norm Mears with Recycling Advisory Board. No?
Mayor Protam, guests, Mr. Mayor's had a conflict tonight. He's getting beat here, so he's stuck. Recycling Advisory Board, five key objectives. Happened to be the same five key as last year. Some of the tasks under those five keys have changed. Identify areas with low participation. Again, whether that's multifamily, certain commercial waste sectors, whatever. Sort of, there's some specialty recycling products, if you will, out there. Try to place the person trying to get rid of the product with maybe somebody in the industry that can use that. So we're sort of a liaison in terms of helping place that. Again, a lot of our information is in trilingual. Again, help a lot of different areas of our community. Second item, again, publicize and educate. That's a big part of recycling, obviously. Assist with certain functions that the city sponsors puts on or participates with. Information on our web pages, Facebook, et cetera, any of the social media. They promote recycling. Special materials along, in conjunction with Catawba County, some of their e-waste and household hazardous waste. Those special events that we have. Third objective, expand the scope of the city's waste reduction. And this is one where we feel like we had a major, a little bit of success just before fixing to, if you will. Catawba County signed a franchise agreement with Republic Waste basically last month. And part of that agreement, Republic will be essentially building a single-stream recycling facility. That's scheduled to come online in the July summer of '14, so it's a year and a half away yet. But now that that part has at least been solidified, that gives us a target to start shooting for with regard to getting something in line for residential, single-stream recycling here. And what we're looking for is obviously maybe another rollout that'll go replace the Blue Bin. Maybe they just pick up every two weeks instead of every week. But essentially, a lot of the products that can't be picked up today, if you will, can go in that single-stream bin and be picked up. And so we'll have some agreements to work out, some decisions to make of how to collect that. But again, you'll be hearing more about that over the next year and a half, if you will. So, you know, how to roll that single-stream collection in. But that's a big plus for us. And we're going to see more product picked up. But what we're really going to see is a reduction in our waste going to the landfill. And of course, we pay for every ton that goes into the landfill, so that's a little bit of savings to us also. We'll never pay for it, certainly, we're not. Again, environmentally is the right thing to do. So that's, that one we feel pretty good about. Priority four, objective number four. This one we get a lot of fun out of, and that's the campaign where we hit all the fourth grade classes in Hickory City School System with the play trash. That's the one that, again, we're requesting $3,000 to put that on. That's one that the teachers have looked forward to. The kids look forward to it. And again, yeah, when we get to fourth grade, we get to see this kind of thing. So that's, they can help teach mom and dad the right way to do things. The last one that we try to keep an eye on, obviously, and we look at, is the solid waste ordinance. And so there's some rules and regs on the ordinance itself. And that'll relate a little bit to the single-stream recycling topic that we just mentioned about. So those are the five key objectives. There's obviously a lot of tasks under each one. I just get a couple under each one of those five. And the request is for $3,000 for the play trash. Question? We're still one of the best in the state. And as soon as we hit that single-stream recycling target, we're going to, I think, a lot of places.
Single-stream being all with the...
And, yeah, simply, you know, the Blue Bin today, you put it all in one bin. When the guy comes with a truck, he starts separating glass from plastic, green glass from brown glass. Essentially, the single-stream means it'll still go in hopefully one container. Hopefully, a rollout where we can pick it up automated. It'll just get dumped into a truck, almost like, just like a garbage truck. That truck takes it to a facility where they essentially dump it out, and in that facility, everything gets separated. By doing that, we're able to essentially collect more types of recycled goods from what we're doing today, because that truck that gets collected in today can only handle certain things. Again, we recycle cardboard. But you have, if you're at the home, you have to take it to one of our drop-off centers to put it in something. Under this scenario, that cardboard can get folded up and go in that single-stream box, and it'll get dumped at the house. Your Coke boxes, Pepsi boxes, those things, what's called mixed paper. We think of it as cardboard, not titanium cardboard. It's sort of a mixed paper product. Cereal boxes, those kind of things available to go in that single-stream system. So again, that's a ton each out of the landfill, and products getting reused. We're pretty excited about that.
I see you recall that there was an issue with styrofoam. Is that still...
Styrofoam is one that we're sort of targeting a little bit. Again, how do you handle it? What do you do with it? There's always going to be, it sounds funny when you talk about contamination in a waste stream, but styrofoam, you buy the new something, and it comes back in styrofoam, you cram it back in the cardboard box, and you put the cardboard box in the rollout, and it gets picked up. By the time it gets to the factory and it gets pulled apart, there's styrofoam there. So there's going to be some version of contamination, if you will, in that scenario. But, so the recycling facility is going to have to have some form of deal with it. Whether a big fan blows it out of the way, and it gets blown to a certain spot, if you will, it was very oversimplified. But when they collect it and it all gains up, what do they do with it? Is there a marketplace for that versus then it goes in a dumpster and goes to the landfill? So those are a couple of things that'll get worked out over time.
You have other questions? Last, but certainly not least, is Alan Jackson with the Business Development Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Protam, guests, members of city council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, Mr. Stig, and me again. Reporting in from the Business Development Committee. We've had a good year of meetings and efforts and activities that we've been excited about. And want to talk to you a little bit about some of our objectives for this 2013-14 year that we're going into here. We have a couple of different categories of objectives. We've got some that we consider active objectives, things that we're going to be working very actively on this year. And then a few also we're just going to be keeping more of an eye on, and we'll consider more future objectives that we want to keep our finger pulse on and that's something we want to look at working on in the future. The branding and web portal, and of course, we were helping with that part process of getting it started, is pretty much off and running. What we see our job being on the Business Development Committee is to really put in and focus in on any of the activities that have to do with that as they relate to the work, business development, environment, and right in our city. So things like looking at the website, going up to the public to help promote the area from a work standpoint. All the sections of the website having to do with the work are something we're going to be tackling as far as reviewing and trying to make sure there's always content being updated and updated information on that side. So the branding and web portal is just something we're going to be addressing and looking at throughout our meetings throughout the year. Innovative city incentives is our second active objective having to do with development and permitting. Part of what we see as our goal here, what we'll be working on, is researching some of the innovative approaches that maybe other communities are using with regards to city incentives. Then also looking at some of the development permitting and vacant grants that are coming our way. The way we kind of see our work going is that we're going to be reviewing and recommending some of these opportunities that come to the city from a business development standpoint, especially when it comes to vacant grants. Look at those, and then be able to come back to city council and recommend ones that we feel like are something that we'll be looking at, something in the best interest of the city moving forward when it comes to grant money like that. So we're going to see ourselves as more of a sounding board for some of those business development opportunities that come our way, bring them up to the city council with our recommendations when we think it'd be a good fit for us. Third objective, active objective anyway, is looking at the whole idea of micro lending and financing in the area. That's really more of a research project for us right now. We have helped support some educational opportunities in the community to get businesses some knowledge about what may be or may not be in some situations, some financing options from a business standpoint. Our goal right now is to monitor and understand all the options that are available for business. We have a kind of an idea of more working on a future innovative bank consortium type of concept. That's really more of a long-term process, something we want to keep researching and discussing. Fourth is the recognition of existing business programs. That's actually something you've been seeing in some of your city council meetings in recent months. Really trying to take and make sure we recognize those businesses that have been here in Hickory for the long haul. They've been here for a long time. They've chosen Hickory as their home since day one, and they're still here. And we've had a lot of fun, as I'm sure I probably even have too, getting to hear some of these businesses get recognized in these council meetings in the last few months. That's something we want to continue on throughout the year as well. We've been using our Hickory Speaks website to try to solicit input from the citizens on businesses that maybe we've overlooked, ones that maybe have had a long history here that have flown under the radar a little bit. There's actually been a few supplies in there, so it's been a good tool for using for that. And that actually leads right into the fifth objective, which is the solicitation of community ideas for business development. Using hickoryspeaks.com, which has been used for a couple of projects so far. We are using it also to solicit some of those longstanding business names and contact information as well. That's the only objective right now that has any cost associated with it. There's a, we're looking at $540 a year to host the site and be able to use that for getting good public information on some business development ideas. And there'll be a one-time fee of $500, or not fee, but extended. And there'll be a one-time fee of five hundred dollars, or not fee, but expense, for promotional materials and paper surveys to use to supplement that throughout the year. So that one thousand forty dollars is the only item with any financial impact on our plans right now. That's our five active objectives. Beyond that, we've got two that we see as more of our future objectives, but we keep on the agenda and we'll be talking about every meeting we have. One is the idea of developing a better network for peer networking throughout the city. We have a couple of instances already. One of the ones, a guild that I'm involved with, with media and technology professionals, that's really worked out well and has actually been the springboard for us bringing the TEDx Hickory event to Hickory both last year and this year, coming up on March twenty-third. That was really the brainchild of this peer networking group, guild of related professionals that are willing to sit and work together, come up with ideas how we can better the community and the business environment around us. We'd like to see that expand and go into other industries, but we also, we do have that as a future objective. It may not be something we get to tackle as much this year, but we are gonna be looking at in the years to come. And the other one with that is internships and mentoring programs. We believe there's a lot of good organizations in the area that are trying to tackle this right now, trying to find a more comprehensive way to offer internships and mentoring opportunities to students. We'd really like to help see that happen, but we're in a little bit of a wait-and-see mode right now and trying to see what some other organizations in the county or community may be putting together. We definitely wanna lend our support to it, but it may be down the road that that's something from a business development situation we see as real need, if it's not formulated from other sources. That's really our seven total objectives that we have, five of them active, two of them considered future. The only item that has any budget associated with it is the one thousand forty dollars for the public website to try to keep soliciting public input on business development activities. And that's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the other committee.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I've heard three or four comments of appreciation for you developing that and doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Good job on the howl show this morning.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much. That concludes our report from the boards and commissions. I just had two comments I'd like to make. First of all, I'd just like to say what an appreciation we have for each and every person that serves our boards and commissions. They're very valuable to us on the City Council and city staff. I think that each and every one of them has done a tremendous job and contributed greatly to our motto and our branding, like well crafted. And I hope to take back each and every volunteer that serves, I must appreciate what they do. I think that the benefit of what it costs us far outweighs what we get from each of these boards and commissions. So I thank you very much for your service. The second part is, I think, for most of the boards and commissions, the presentation that the mayor heard, that they're all trying to involve our youth and incorporate somehow our schools. And I think that that's a very positive step forward and our community for that also. Anyone else?
I just had to go. Here's your job. I have a great sense that it's quite not over. The people in our community, the boards and commissions, we have absolutely phenomenal volunteers. And it's, this is one of my most favorite meetings when Chairman Come and present the report plan to our community. We're all reports now, thank you very much.
The other thing is just, it's nice to hear the collaborative efforts that all of our boards and commissions and that came to involve other people within and utilize and leverage dollars and exposure.
One other thing, I just thought of this, you've never served on one of our boards and commissions quite frequently. Some of them have vacancies, and some of them have vacancies that have been vacant for some time, as we've heard. So if there's a board or commission you think that you might be interested in serving on, you can go to our website and there's other means to be able to find out and tell you a little bit more about them and certainly then an application. So we encourage you to do that if you're interested. Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to make a motion right now that we consider an item that's not on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
The second motion would be to allow people to speak at this time regarding items that are on our agenda for tonight.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak on any items that are on our agenda right now?
I would like to speak about stuff that is not on the agenda, which was brought to my attention this past week.
Okay, step forward, please. State your name and your address.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Franklin Davis, in the name of God and the Deaf and the Merciful. I have a question. Of your City Council members, how many of you own a business?
You can make a statement.
I'm asking a question, I'm leading up to what my statement is, 'cause I come on behalf of a citizen in the Ridgeview community about his business. I'm asking a question, how many of the ladies and gentlemen on the council own a business? Okay.
You can make a statement.
Now, excuse me. Are you responsible for what goes on outside of your business on the sidewalk? Or are you responsible for what goes on inside of your business? A citizen of the Ridgeview community came to me and he told me that the police department are harassing his customers. And he goes by the book, there's nothing going on in his place. He has a manifest of who comes in and the order in which they are to be served. He has told me, and I really believe it, because I saw it when I went up there. He has told me that the customers who go to his place or business cannot even step outside to smoke a cigarette or to talk or to do anything outside of the sidewalk. The police officers came up there and they told him, you can't do it out on the sidewalk in the front of a shop. So he tried to accommodate that, and he said, well, what about going to the back? But first, he showed them that the customers was on his manifest and the order in which they came in. And then he tried to accommodate them, said, okay, what about if they go out back? And then the police officer came back and he said, no, we've had a complaint. And that's the second time from the same person that I've heard about a complaint. One, I've witnessed with my own eyes. And then there were citations written, I think, outside is written to these gentlemen's patrons. Is that the right behavior to have? And also, I know that there's one, this brings up a good time, with people acting like that. I said something before about a policeman's review board that was comprised of citizens of the city. I think this would be a good time to think into that and look into that more closely. The one time, my personal experience of seeing this happen, everyone knows this young man, he has a daughter who has cancer. Every weekend and on the evenings, he's out there frying hot dogs. He paid taxes with the openest little stamp. He's out there frying hot dogs, chicken, whatever, to help offset the cost of his daughter's cancer treatments. This particular night, oh, by the way, this gentleman, there's no riffraff or anything going on in the area. He has gotten permission from his relative to cook in that area. And what I witnessed that night was a lieutenant came up, said that he had a complaint because the gentleman played music, and he asked, okay, where did it come from? The next-door neighbor was sitting on the porch listening to music. The store across the street was closed, and the building that was on the other side of the street, they were closed, and his home was on the other side. So where did this complaint come from? It seemed to me that the officer was more or less trying to be a bully. And when he stared me down, I took it as being a bully. I want to just make a note that this is happening, and they are employed by you. This is happening in the city. How can we trust someone when there being a bully? I think it's a bully to try to scare people. And on that day, when the gentleman called me, I went up there. There was one police car parked in the parking lot at his place of business. And it was one across the street. When I went up there and I parked my truck, I sat in there for a second, I listened to what he said. He showed me the manifest, and he had other witnesses who was in there when the police officers did it. And when I turned around, the cops were gone. I'd just like to make a note of this and let you know this is going on, and I'm open, and my group, CEG, we are open for dialogue. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else? Okay, I hear a motion for approval to minutes of later meeting on February nineteenth.
Certainly.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's see, that was a motion by Mr. Meister, second by Mrs. Patton. Mary D. Manes. Motion to read upon the application, second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, second by Mrs. Fox, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mary D. Manes. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like approval with consent agenda.
Second.
All right, a motion by Mr. Laurel, second by Mrs. Patton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mary D. Manes. Informational items, Mr. Berry?
No informational items this evening, yes.
All right, we'll look at new business.
We have one department report this evening. I'll ask the city's community development manager, Mr. Dave Leonetti, to come to the podium and present a vacant building revitalization and demo grant to City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor Protam, guests, members of the council, Mr. Crowe. Tonight, I'm going to present an application for a vacant building revitalization grant application for the old Simmons Hosery Mill, the Simmons stockout most recently between Monroe High College and Hickory High School. Give you a little background, the grant allows for a grant of up to thirty thousand dollars for fifteen percent of eligible project costs. This is the second one we've done since the guidelines were overhauled drastically in two thousand eleven. I'm gonna do a couple of tweaks at your last meeting, I believe that was, as well. But this is the second revitalization grant we've done. We also did a demolition grant a month and a half. Give you a little background about the property, the former Simmons Hosery Mill. It's located at three ninety-one Tenth Avenue Drive in New Orleans. Like I said, it's between LR and Hickory High School, approximately ten thousand square feet. The estimated redevelopment cost is roughly four hundred and fifty thousand. At that cost, obviously, it's eligible for the full grant amount. The owner is seeking to renovate this building for office and storage space for accessory exchange. I know that the tent listed in the lease agreement they have. They sell hosiery products, bags, hats, and other sporting accessories to large chain retailers. And to the best of my knowledge, this is gonna be put office space and some ancillary storage space as well. Mr. McNeely, the owner of the building is here as well, if you have any questions. These are just a few pictures of the building. This is the front facing Tenth Avenue Drive. And then this is sort of the, I guess, the west side, maybe? That road's kind of angled a bit. This area in the, in the grassed area will be paved for parking once the building is renovated. This is the side along the side street there. These windows, I believe, will be opened up. You have, I believe, in your packets, kind of a, another photograph of the old Charlotte Observer Building in downtown Hickory, and that's kind of, as far as, that's sort of a pretty close representation of what the building owner is going for with the renovation. Sort of, I believe he wants to paint the building gray and have, you know, open up all those windows to improve the appearance. There'd also be parking along this side, which would be sort of, I believe, ninety degree parking along the street there, so people will be able to turn in from that side street to get in. And that would be, I think, handicap entrance would be open in that area. With that, staff recommends approval, subject to the results of a phase one environmental side assessment. This Andrea Sorek presented that additional requirement that you approved at the last meeting.
I really appreciate you applying the guidelines to allow this to come in, because this is very much needed. And it's not in the target area, but it's nice, we have these all over the city. So you all recommend for that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Real briefly, what is the future target area as far as that's concerned?
We still have the target area in place, what's known as the urban revitalization area. What the tweaks to the eligibility guidelines did at your last meeting, it will allow staff a little more flexibility in terms of recommending sites that, sort of, I mean, when you see this site, it is an old hosiery mill, and that's, that was the main goal of the program originally, was to redevelop these older hosiery mills. You know, probably eighty-five percent of them are located within that target area. But we do have, you know, there's a handful out there that are not within that target area. This allows some flexibility for us to bring some, what we view as good projects to the Business Development Committee and then on to you all in the City Council.
I just think it's important to continue with that as a final session, maybe we'll relay differences as much as possible.
Make a motion. Motion? Make a motion, please.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meister, second by Mrs. Fox, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, she next?
Thank you, please.
All right, are there any appointments for boards and commissions? No. Presentations, petitions, requests? We're going to be done with that. Any managers not on the agenda? Any general comments by council? Okay, I'd like a motion that we go into closed session, per the items that are on the agenda.
Very.
Make a motion, second, I'm not confused. We'll be in closed session, we'll come back out and...
I can take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be in closed session.